It's four o'clock, so I am gonna call this meeting.
We've got it started.
Call this meeting to order if we could rise for the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lee, could you tell our caller back tomorrow? I got that Board of Select been leaving. I forgot.
Uh, we have item number three, um, is, um, reappointments to the Ethics Commission. This requires Board of Selectmen and RTM approval. We have, um, Brian Cantor of Curtis Terrace. This term will be from seven twenty-one to seven twenty-three. Dana Carey, uh, Acorn Lane, excuse me, Green Acre Lane, seven twenty-one to seven twenty-three, and Craig Van Steenbergen, Riverside Drive, seven twenty-one to seven twenty-three. Do I have a motion to approve?
Show moved.
I'll second it.
Um, I, I know all of our, um, I believe everyone is on the line. I'm taking a look here. I see Brian. Our, our other, um, I don't know if Craig's on. Craig, are you on? Dana, are you on? Okay, well, um, I, I just wanna say, I, I know these were, um, to fill in partial terms and now we're back to full terms, so I really wanna just say, I appreciate, um, each of you, um, stepping up, uh, to serve on the Ethics Commission. I know they don't meet that regularly, but when they do, it is very important that we have, um, uh, common sense and ethical people serving on this, uh, commission. And so, Brian, thank you for being here today, and I'll, I'm gonna open it up, uh, I would first offer to you, would you, if you would like to say anything.
Now, I'm honored. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Great. So, I'm honored to be on the commission. I look forward to continuing the work on the commission. Thank you.
And I'll open it up to the, uh, the board. Any comments from, uh, Tom or Nancy?
Nancy, go ahead.
Thank you, and yeah, I'll just echo what's been said. Thank you so much. Appreciate your service and just, you know, we'll, we'll say that we had a chance to talk a few months ago and, and really do appreciate your willingness to step in again and to serve. So, thank you.
I'd like to add my thanks for, uh, your, your willingness to serve. I'd also like to say that I hope you have nothing to do on this board over the next couple of years. I hope it's a very quiet, uh, tenure on, on the board. Uh, that, that would be well-served for the town. So, uh, thanks again for serving.
Very good point, Mr. Flynn. All right, if there's no further comment, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Congratulations and thank you again, Brian. All right. Our next item is item number four. This is first select woman appointment only and does not require any vote. Um, it is a position on the Economic Development Commission. Justin Beck, uh, who's an unaffiliate, lives on Beth Drive, and this is to replace, um, a resignation, Ree- Ree Shee Narig, uh, who resigned. Um, so I just wanted to offer that up, and I think, Justin, are you on the line? Jennifer said you might, uh, we might, he might be calling in. Justin, are you on the line? Okay, well, um, so that's, um, not much discussion unless anybody else wants to. Um, Justin has a lot of good experience that I think, uh, he's replacing the position, um, um, on the, on the econo- slot on the Economic Development Commission. So, if there's no further comment, I will move on to item number five.
Thank you.
Uh, purchasing authority. Do I have, anybody wanna make a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Uh, make a motion to...
Put it before us, please.
To waive, to waive the reading.
Well, how about to waive the reading and to put the item before us, all in one motion?
I'll second it.
All, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, so this, uh, we have Gerald Foley on the line. Also, we have Police Chief Calamares and Captain Bucherati, who are on the line to discuss this item. I'll hand it over to you gentlemen.
Yeah, so I, I'll start. This is Gerald Foley. Um, he's just calling to say the item before you is for the, uh, communication console proposal. It's for the Fairfield slash Westport Combined Dispatch. Um, traditionally, the town has been utilizing, uh, State of Connecticut contract awards, uh, for the purchase of our radio equipment, so this is not, uh, a unique situation. Uh, what is unique is that this is, um, larger than the normal purchase, and again, it's for, uh, the Combined Dispatch, so, um, the thought was to, to bring it to, uh, the Board of Selectmen for review and approval.
Thank you, um...
I'll open it up to the board unless there's any other additional, um, presentation from, uh, Captain Bucherati or Police Chief Calamares.
I will, uh, I have a couple of questions if there is, if there's not.
Okay, I'm gonna open it up to the board. Go ahead, go ahead, Tom.
Thank you. Um, first of all, my normal question, I know you love when I do this, Brenda, I'm assuming that, uh, the town attorney has reviewed this contract and there's nothing in here that, uh, is out of, out of bounds or out of line? Mr. Baldwin?
Yeah, hi, um, I have not, in fact, reviewed this. I just got it late Thursday, and that's why I believe that the, uh, motion before you stipulates that it's subject to, um, it meeting with my, uh, satisfaction.
Yeah, I see that in here, which is one of the reasons I asked it. So, we're not, so we're not ready for, uh, sign off on this yet until, how long's it gonna take you, Jim, to look at the contract?
Um, I don't think it should take me long, but I'm not so sure that it, it means that you need to hold off your vote on the item, um, but that's ultimately up to the board, of course.
Right. Uh, did this go through the normal bid process, or it doesn't sound like it did? It went through the town, uh, the state process, is that right? Mr. Foley?
Yes, yes, this is, yeah, this is Gerald Foley, yeah. So, what would, what happens with, um, all the Motorola equipment that the, the town procures, we utilize the, uh, State of Connecticut Contract Award, um, so we buy our, our portables, um, and any of the, basically, any rela- anything related to radio equipment, we buy it through this state award. Um, it, basically, it's, um, the, the way it's structured is we do get a very good discount from Motorola for this equipment, and the, the items that are before you have gotten even a bigger discount. Um, so, again, it's, it's utilizing the state, the state award, and it, the Motorola is the state standard, uh, for, uh, radio equipment, so I think every municipality and, and the police department could comment on this, they all use Motorola equipment. It's basically so that we're all talking at the same equipment, and it's, uh, all connectivity does, minimizes those items, um, and so, it's, cause of the co- Combined Dispatch, it has to meet the state requirements.
Yeah, I got it. I, I got it. So, a couple of questions on that. Does that mean that this contract is standard under the state, so that even though Mr. Baldwin needs to review it, the contract is pretty standard? Is that fair?
Correct. Yes, that is fair.
The second question, I, I was involved a few months back in kind of a review with both the police and fire department. They're looking at a significant upgrade of their radio equipment, which in fact, I support their initiative on this. I know they're going for alternative sources of funding, and I wanna make sure that if we're acquiring anything here, A, it's not duplicative, and B, that it, it goes along in supporting what they're trying to do with the rest of the equipment. So, if somebody from the police or fire department can, uh, opine on that, I would, I would feel better.
Yes, this is, uh, Captain Bucherati. I could answer that. That, um, this, these consoles will link into the new system that we're proposing. Also, they will tie into the older system that we have now, so the dispatch center can function, you know, as, as planned, uh, so it, it is fully forward compatible.
And that, and it's not duplicative at all?
No, not at all.
And does, uh, does Westport have to sign off on this as well, or has Westport at least been part of this process in reviewing the equipment?
Yeah, Westport has been, um, Westport is involved in this. Um, they're upgrading their own radio system. This, this, uh, purchase is for the, strictly for the center, so this has been, ever part of the work group and approved all of this already.
Okay, so Westport's on board, this is compliant with the state contract, and it supports your proposal for the go-forward system. Is that all correct?
Yes.
La- last comment, the funding for this comes out of the funds that were set aside to build out the ECC, is that what, uh, I see where it's, it's referencing, I just wanna make sure that that's what I'm understanding. Is that correct?
This is, uh, yeah, this is Gerald Foley, yes. So, I'm, I put the account number on there, and it's, it's from, as you, you stated, yes, it's from the ECC Combined Dispatch.
And let me ask, last question on this, does this, uh, comply with the budget for this component of that contract, for this component of that, uh, project? Okay, so it's within budget as well?
Yes.
Fair enough. I'm good. Thank you.
I don't have any questions.
I think you're on mute, Brenda.
I was, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's right.
All right, if there's no further questions, um, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Item passes unanimously. Thank you.
I'm happy to make a motion to waive the reading for item six through ten.
Secuted.
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, Nancy. Okay, so item number six, Gerald Foley is here, uh, again, and we have the Executive Director of Operations, Angelus Papa George, and Manager of Construction and Security, Sal Morbeto, to present the next item. Angelus, you're up. Unmute.
There you go. So, this, uh, I don't really have anything to present. This was for purchasing. This is the, uh, fur roof replacement that went out to bid, and so this is, Silk Town was the lowest bidder on this, and I think Gerald could probably give you some more information on that.
So, before you go to the more information, um, just to kinda cut to the quick here, uh, did the town attorney again, uh, review these documents and were comfortable with the performance requirements and et cetera in these documents?
Hi, this is Jim Baldwin. The answer is yes, and there were a few items that, uh, needed to be addressed, but they're in the contract with my satisfaction.
So, they're, so they're already changed, Jim?
That's correct.
And the funding for this is in line with what was expected, Mr. Papa George?
Correct.
Is, you scared me a little bit when you say the, when you say it's the lowest bidder, is this the, do they have everything in there, the bids were leveled, the process was, was comfortable? Go ahead.
It was, absolutely, and Silk Town is a, is a vendor that we've done a lot of business with, and we will love to continue doing business with. They've always done right by us and the town.
Okay, and the performance bonds are in place relative to this?
Yes, so what we'll do is, once we, this Gerald Foley, so once we, um, execute the agreement, yes, we'll get the, the insurance. We've already, we got the insurance on file, that's with the risk management, uh, everything is, appears to be in line. Uh, our next step will be, once we execute the contract, to get the performance bonds in place.
Okay, and when's this work supposed to commence?
We're looking to start it, actually, as soon as school closes, um, so we're hoping to, to basically, um, start next week. Uh, what we've done is, we've actually asked the contractor, um, to have all the materials on site, um, and we're hoping that that's all gonna occur next week or the very latest the following week, and then, um, Angelus's team will be coordinating the construction process. Uh, we're hoping that they will be substantially complete well in advance of when school commences in August.
Thank you so much. I've got, I've got nothing further.
Anything from, uh, Nancy? Do you have anything?
I don't, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. If there's no further, uh, comments or questions, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. Item passes unanimously.
Thank you all.
Thank you so much. Good luck with the project.
Thank you.
Our next item is item number seven, and it's been waived as far as the reading. This is, um, Mark Barnhart is on the line. This item also requires RTM approval, and I'm gonna hand it over to you, Mark.
Thank you. Uh, members of the board, uh, Mark Barnhart, Director of Community Economic Development for the town. Um, the town has been a participant in the State Neighborhood Assistance Act program for a number of years now. Uh, as mentioned, this is a state program administered through the Department of Revenue Services that provides, um, tax credits on corporate tax liability to, um, entities that provide charitable contributions to approved municipal agencies or nonprofit organizations under the act. Uh, our responsibility is to solicit, if we wanna opt into the program, to solicit applications from eligible municipal agencies or nonprofit entities, approve them locally after conducting a public hearing and designated a municipal liaison to administer the program at the town level, which traditionally has been out of my office. Uh, we did, uh, ascertain or solicit applications, which, uh, we've received eight, uh, applications as of the April twenty-third deadline. Uh, summary is provided in your packet. Um, we will have a public hearing coming up on the twenty-first, and then, uh, assuming your, uh, approval, um, have the RTM consider it. It would have to be submitted to the Department of Revenue Services by July first in order to, uh, be eligible. So, I'm happy to entertain any questions you may have at this time.
Nancy, do you have anything?
No, not right now.
Mark, can you give me an example of this, then? Give me, gi- give me a tangible example of, of one of these or a couple of these, if you wouldn't mind, so I can better understand it.
FTC and Operation Hope have applied under this program for a number of years now.
Okay.
Um, Operation Hope in support of their, um, homeless support, um, soup kitchen, um, uh, pro- uh, programs, uh, uh, hunger initiatives, and, you know, we do have companies, um, Santa, Bigelow T, uh, UI, among others, that come to mind, that have provided, uh, charitable contributions to support those programs, and then, they then, those companies would then need to apply to the Department of Revenue Services for, uh, the tax credit. So, it, you know, there are no town funds involved, there, this is a good way to, uh, support, uh, community programs that meet a public need. Um, you know, it's not, uh, it doesn't raise a huge amount of dollars, but we've received, typically, these agencies receive, uh, in, in, in the aggregate, between fifty and a hundred thousand dollars in charitable contributions each year, which go to support needy causes. So, it, it seems like a great win-win for, uh, for a lot of different groups here.
You referenced FTC. Can you tell me, how are they involved in this? What, what's their...
Well, FTC has applied, uh, and, and used funds to, to raise, uh, they've raised funds for improvements to, um, to their warehouse, or their, their performing art space, uh, to, to install energy-efficient lighting, uh, for example. Um, it, it provides a small amount of the funding, overall funding for those projects. There's also, uh, applied for, um, they've run a number of community programs throughout the year, provide arts programming for under, underserved communities, and so they've raised a small amount of money for that initiative too, for, for a number of years now.
So, the, in this program, you have, uh, kinda the buy side and the sell side, right? You have the, the community, uh, organizations that are applying and saying, "We would like to receive these funds for these purposes," and then you have the corporations saying, "We'll line up and provide these funds for the tax credit." Is that how this works?
Yeah, it's kind of like a matchmaking service, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, and it's no town funds, but what it is, is a way the town has to kinda opt into this for them to be able, for our residents or our organizations and our corporations to be able to partake in this, is that...
Yep, that's true, and roughly about half, uh, half the communities in the state participate in the program.
Why would half of them not, then, I guess is the, the reason? Why, why...
Maybe they don't have the bandwidth to, uh, it, it's not a huge administrative burden, frankly. Uh, it requires a few hours of my time each year, and we have to obviously conduct a public hearing, but that's, it, it's not a huge, um, uh, manpower issue here, but, you know, there might be other communities that just don't see the need, I don't know.
That's kind of an interesting thing. Yeah, it's kind of interesting to say that fifty percent don't partake in this if there's no real cost to the town and there's a benefit to these agencies and to your corporate citizens.
Yep. I, I'm sure it's mostly the smaller, uh, smaller communities that aren't participating, and maybe they just don't have, uh, as many resources, uh, or community organizations that are in need of those funds, or corporations are looking to provide those contributions, so...
I think you might get that question at the RTM. I mean, I, I'm supportive of this, but I, I think we should know a little bit more about why, if, if truly it's, you know, that high an opt-out rate?
Yeah.
Or something we're not missing?
Uh, as I said, it's, it's increased over the years, and we now have eighty-two, uh, communities that are participating, at least listed on the DRS website, and, you know, as we know, there's a hundred sixty-nine towns and cities in Connecticut, so it's about fifty percent. But all, all the big communities are, uh, I would venture to say, all the big cities and towns are participating in the program.
Okay, thank you. I have nothing further.
Okay, uh, Nancy, do you have any questions?
I don't. Thank you, Mark, for that explanation, and Tom for the questions. It was helpful, thank you.
Sure. Anytime.
All right. If there's no further questions, all in favor.
Aye.
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 All right, motion carries unanimously, and the next item is Mark as well. Uh, some more, um, economic development, uh, community and economic development, um...
Okay, at least community development.
E, E, E. Okay, you're up, Mark.
It's a mouthful. Again, uh, Mark Barnhart, uh, Director of Community Economic Development for the town, uh, always double-dipping this time of year, um, making my annual pilgrimage to the Board of Selectmen and RTM, for just, not just the NAA program, but the Community Development Block Grant Program as well. Uh, we receive, uh, as, as you probably all know, uh, we're a recipient of, of federal funds administered through the Department of Housing and Urban Development for many, many years now, uh, under its Community Development Block Grant Program. Uh, this program, um, is basically, the, the primary objective is to provide, um, decent housing, suitable living environment, expanded economic opportunities principally for persons of low to moderate income. Um, and, you know, we're an entitlement, uh, community, meaning that we don't have to competitively apply through the state each year to receive allocation of these federal dollars. Uh, federal funding has been fairly stable over the last few years, it's, it's, uh, it's been roughly around a half million bucks. Uh, this year is, uh, we're expecting to receive five hundred and twenty-five thousand six hundred and forty dollars. Uh, we do receive a small amount of program income. As people repay program loans, uh, those monies are reprogrammed and available for our use to fund our activities. So, the, the combined total of that, uh, means that we'll have six hundred thousand dollars at our disposal, uh, to fund these activities for the upcoming year. Um, you know, we do generally have broad discretion in terms of how we allocate these funds within certain categories. They have to be el- eligible, they have to meet a national objective, which in our case generally means that they're serving persons or areas of low to moderate income. Um, fifteen percent of the, uh, the total funds, uh, can be used for pub- so-called public service activities, where we see the most demand, uh, for these dollars, and then another twenty percent we can use to defer, um, or defray our, our administrative costs to operate the program. And we typically allocate the maximum under each of those two categories, and the balance, uh, goes to meet our, uh, public facilities, non-housing, uh, community development needs, and affordable housing activities. Uh, these are all in accordance with a five-year, uh, consolidated plan, and we have to then create an annual plan each year showing how, um, we're meeting the objectives outlined, uh, to address community needs that were in the five-year plan. So, again, we go through an application process, conduct some public hearings, and then bring in a proposed allocation plan, uh, to you for your review and approval, which also needs to go to the board, uh, the RTM. Um, not a whole lot different in terms of, uh, our allocation in these various categories, um, but, you know, I'm happy to, uh, go into any more detail, to answer any specific questions you have, um, within each of these different projects at this time.
Thank you, Mark. Is there any questions from the board?
Um, couple, one or two items. Mark, I didn't, um, I, I'm obviously familiar with this, this has come on, come on for years and years. Um, how does this relate to what we're doing with the, the neighborhood surrounding that, the kinda the, the, the Old Navy set of, where we're buying up these houses? Are you, this, these funds relative to that, to, or, or would this be outside the bounds of something like that?
Uh, you can't use community development block grant funds for new housing construction, but you can use it to support housing-related activities. So, we could use it, um, you know, subject to the availability of funds for acquisition of property, for site clearance activities like demolishing the buildings, that type of thing, and that's, um, you know, one possibility. We're also using, uh, CDBG funds to support our, uh, development of an affordable housing plan under planning activities. So, uh, you can't use it to actually build new housing, but you can use it to rehab existing housing or to support, uh, as I mentioned, some of those other categories to support I think you're, you're either on mute, mute, or your speaker dropped off.
My apologies. We're doing some of those activities at present to piece together that neighborhood to kind of address those issues, are we not?
Yes, I mean, there are, there are some activities as part of the overall redevelopment plan that would likely be eligible for CDBG funding, and in fact, when we acquired the property originally from US government and took down some of the buildings to support, uh, the construction of new housing for Operation Hope, uh, we covered the demolition and environmental remediation costs through CDBG. So, it is likely that we will try to use some of those federal dollars to support some of those activities if we need it. I mean, I'm, I'm hopeful that, um, we, uh, will attract other, other resources to the project, but that's always a possibility.
Right, well, I know we just have a limited fund that we were dealing with, at least initially, we need to replenish that fund once we have a partner and then move along from there.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Nancy, do you have anything?
No, thank you. Thanks, Mark.
Okay.
Thank you.
There's no other questions, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
And, thanks, Mark. Our next item is item number nine, um, purchasing authority. Gerald Foley will present this item. This is for environmental consulting services on the East Trunk Sewer, uh, relocation project. Um, go ahead, Gerald, you're up.
Yes, hi, this is Gerald Foley again. Um, so the item before you is, is we're entering into a, a proposed contract with tie and bond for environmental consulting services, uh, to conduct soil and groundwater sampling assessments concerning the East Trunk Sewer relocation project. Um, what we did is we utilized, um, our on-call, um, environmental consulting services firms. Uh, we went out and did a, an RFP to them, and we had, uh, three firms com- uh, complete or submit proposals, so we had, um, Time Bond had the most favorable proposal, and that's the item that you have before you for review and approval.
Thank you, Gerald. I'll, uh, open it up to the board for any questions.
No, very familiar with this one. I have no questions.
Yeah.
Uh, the one, the one question I would have is, are we, are we going about that, we're using so many environmental services, uh, on various projects and various things, are we, Gerald, going about it the right way and putting these out to bid, um, as discrete projects, or should we be putting together a, a broader contract with a higher level of discount, given the amount, the volume of work that we're actually using with these people at this point in time?
Right, so yeah, Tom, that is a good question. So, what we've done is, we've, we're... Right. So yeah, Tom, that is a good question. So what we've done is we've, we're actually, we're going to be in the next, in the coming weeks or perhaps even in the coming months, we're going to be looking at it and perhaps a different approach at this, because as you commented, yeah, what we're typically doing is we're just chipping away at these things as they come up. Um, so that is something we're going to be, we're, we're trying to get, we have a lot of these, like you said, a lot of these things are on the plate right now. So we're going to try to look at to see, um, we're going to be drawing a line with the, the projects that we're doing now. We have, um, seven or eight sites that we're doing. And then we're going to be basically looking to reassess how we're going to handle the additional sites. Um, and so to your point, that's, that's going to be a yet to be determined. But right now we have a lot of little ones and the one you have before you is a smaller project. And that's smaller in term, the overall scope is small. It's not, it's not, it's a big project and say, but we are going to be revisiting at a later date.
Yeah, I would encourage that because.
Environmental consulting.
Yeah, I, I would encourage it, I think, from a standpoint of your time and efforts, the, the multiple layers we go through, as well as we should be getting volume discount if we know we're comfortable with the, the work product. I think there's just a more efficient way to be, be, you know, managing that process. Um, the other question they have is I, I don't see here that we're saying where the funds are available. Um, looking at the other ones.
That was a snafu on my, my behalf. So what happened was initially when I spoke to, uh, to Mr. Norton, he's on the line, we were, we were going to actually request, and that's what you'll see below. It says this award is subject to approval of funding. What had happened was is, uh, right after this was posted, I had a conversation with Caitlin Bossy and with, um, uh, with Mr. Bremmer that what we're going to do is we're going to utilize funds that exist in place for that particular project. I believe it's like $2.4 million in funding. So this, what you have before you is, is it was an incremental request to, in essence, add more funding to the project, but there's already 2.4 million aside. So it was, we, we, we thought it was best to utilize existing funding in place rather than seek additional funding. Yeah, it was kind of a, it was a, it was something that I omitted in my conversations with Mr. Norton. Um, and then we caught it late on Friday, uh, after, uh, the agenda was published.
So where is, where do I see that? Where it says requires Board of Finance? Go ahead.
Yeah, so directly below it's, it's, uh, the, the language, it was, um, I had it written as this, this was board was a subject to the approval of funding. Um, so on the, the document that you have, that, that's not, it's not there anymore. But I had originally a line that said this ward is subject to the approval of funding, the boards, uh, Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance and RTM. So what happened was that line was stricken, but, and again, my oversight, we didn't put in the account number for you guys to physically reveal. But there is, uh, it's, and Jared's on the line, he could comment on it. There's approximately 2.4 million, uh, that's been set aside, uh, for this particular project. And, and our intent is to utilize the funds in that account to support, um, the hiring of tie and bond for this component of the project.
Great. Jared, Jared, can you confirm that please? Not that I don't trust you, Mr. Foley. I just want to make sure the CFO agrees.
I can confirm. That's, uh, Gerald's exactly right.
Okay, so the funding is available.
Yes.
And we went through, uh, we went through the appropriate process here. And the town attorney has reviewed the documents underlying this whole transaction, I'm assuming.
This is Jim Baldwin, and yes, that is correct.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm all set.
Nancy, do you have anything?
I don't.
Thank you. All right. If there's no further questions, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item. Thanks Gerald. Next item, uh, item number 10. This is again, uh, Water Pollution Control Authority. This requires Board of Finance and RTM approval. And we have, um, Gerald Foley also with our, um, Facility Superintendent Bill Morton. And I'll hand it over to you gentlemen. Thank you.
I don't know where Gerald went, but this is, um.
No, I'm still here. I'm sorry. I flipped my camera off. I'm here. I'm back here.
Okay. Uh, this is additional funding needed to, to, uh, continue the microgrid project that was shut down, uh, by the Connecticut EEP, uh, because they didn't want it to be completed until the hardening project was completed. And we know how many delays we've had with the, the hardening project. Um, and then once, you know, we found contaminated soil and impacted the microgrid project also and in a couple of different locations on where some of their, uh, boxes were going to be sited. Uh, it also impacted, um, the delays impacted, um, some of the, um, electrical equipment they had on site that has to be recertified to be put into place. And, uh, I think we also know, um, what has happened with, yeah, construction materials, especially wire and conduit and things of that nature. Um, the prices have, uh, grown exponentially. So, uh, these are items that, um, the contractor, Anki Electric did not purchase. So now they have to purchase it. So there's been, uh, a, a dramatic increase in the cost for these, these materials.
Anybody have anything else to say? I'll wait to ask questions. I'll wait my turn in line.
I also, I am familiar with all of this.
Yeah, I have nothing to add. I thought.
Go ahead, Mr. Foley.
No, I was gonna say I have nothing else to add beyond what Mr. Norton has said.
Got it. Thank you. Um, to the CFO, the balance in the, uh, in the fund is enough to cover this plus, um, the other discussions we were having, uh, about the other projects. Jared?
Sorry, I was just having another. Can you repeat your question?
So recently, and forgive me my mind, uh, my mind is going here. Uh, recently we approved another project that required some of the funding to come from the W, uh, PCA fund. And now this is a project that's going to be taking 144,000 from, uh, the, the WPCA fund. I want to make sure that there's enough left in that fund balance in order to do this.
Yes, there is enough.
Does it leave us with a significant balance in that account after both these quote-unquote appropriations?
It does.
Okay. Next question. Uh, can you remind me, what is the, remind me the microgrid project? Is this energy efficient? Is this, um, is it because of green energy and conservation? Or is it because of, um, securities, you know, security? I can't remember.
It, it, it's more along the lines of security. It's, it's, it'll, uh, allow us to become, um, sole source in case, um, of, uh, power outages. We'd be going to an island, what's called an island mode. We'd be able to exist for a month, 30 days without, you know, any kind of delivery of power. You know, uh, we'd be on natural gas for our generators. We won't have, we wouldn't have to worry about, um, diesel deliveries and things of that nature.
Right, right. Did we contact, just as, did we contact at all or look at the Connecticut Green Bank for anything they could do for us? And they've done some work with microgrids. Have we reached out to them at all that you're aware of?
Uh, I am not aware of whether we did or not. I know that we did some work with them with the solar panels, but not with, uh, anything, um, with the microgrid. I'm not familiar if they did. They may have, uh, during the design phase and things of that nature, but I'm not, uh.
Yeah, it's, it's something that might, yeah, it might be worth a call. I don't know. It was just a, a thought for you. Okay, thank you. I'm all set.
Good, very good. All right. If there's no further questions, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
All right, our next item, um, is item number 11. And, um, uh, this requires Board of Finance and RTM approval. Actually, the Board of Finance answers tonight. Um, we have Tom Bremmer and Jared Smith who are gonna, um, who are gonna present. I just want to say, you know, uh, before they do, we, we also have, um, Attorney Sastrom on the line as well. Um, obviously this has been an issue that, um, it has sparked a lot of interest in our community. Gould Manor Park has been closed for a very long time. Um, there's been a lot of concern about the park. And so we have been, oh, obviously there's been a lot. Um, COVID slowed us down and then we had some changes or, or things that happened in the conservation department. And, um, so we, we are moving ahead finally. So if I just want to say that before, uh.
Brenda, for this, I'm sorry, for this reason, I did not technically, I don't think, waive the reading of this one.
Right.
Because I thought, so I don't know if that, it's something we should.
Right, okay, I'll read it, but I, I want to also, so resolve that the attached bond resolution entitled the resolution appropriating $945,000 for remediation of historical contaminants and the enhancement of recreation facilities at Gould Manor Park and authorizing the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation be and hereby is approved. And the bound resolution was found in the backup. So this is, um, this is broken out in your, uh, information. I know you can see that some of this is for remediation and some of this is to, to make some, uh, improvements to the park as well. So I'm going to hand it over to Tom Bremmer, who's been working on this, um, in my administration. Go ahead, Mr. Bremmer.
Uh, good afternoon, everybody. Good afternoon, everybody. I hope you can hear me. Um, you should have in your packet, uh, a one sheet where I kind of go over the outlines of the different costs involved, as well as you should have as well two maps of, uh, these are overhead maps of Gould Manor itself, the park. Uh, to briefly go over, if you look at the maps, and I think a picture's worth a thousand words, um, you can see areas that are delineated in, in orange lines. Um, I, I looked at your map and I have actually a slightly newer version that was generated. It's almost identical to yours, but was generated by, by engineers and, uh, Time Bond actually walking, uh, the map. So the shapes of the areas are, are slightly different than what you have. But what you have is more than sufficient to give you an idea of what we're talking about doing. But basically the idea is, um, uh, we approached the Department of Health Services a while back, uh, a few weeks earlier, uh, to get their kind of sense of what we need to do to make sure that the park is the safest, uh, we need to make it, uh, based on historical cap- contaminants. And that generated the, the plan that is before you now. Uh, and we are, we have submitted this plan to the Department of Health Services, uh, to get their sign off so that if we move ahead with what is being proposed, that they will sign off and be very comfortable with what we tried to do. So getting back to the, the maps themselves, you can see, and, and I'm looking at the map with the ball fields on it. Uh, the tennis court on the upper left side, you can see that, uh, we're really focusing on what I would consider the blue areas, the blue dots. Uh, those are kind of indicated of, indicative of the hotspots. We're going to take out the strip of land on either side of the tennis court. We're going to take out a strip of land along, I don't know what street that is, but along the street, uh, along Crestwood Road. Um, and we're going to take a large area out over by the playground, uh, well above the ball fields itself. Uh, those are the excavation areas that we're really focused on. Uh, there are some smaller areas along the, uh, the main street there, um, but the larger areas are what I just described. Um, those that are remove the hots, what we consider the hotspots to be. Um, knowing when, when I know about big trucks and all that kind of stuff, when we start ripping out, uh, all the, all the, uh, soil and land by the tennis courts, uh, in concert, in, uh, consultation with, uh, Anthony, we, we decided we're probably going to have to resurface that tennis court, which is somewhat old already. It's already, it's well cracked and well old. So, uh, the thought was to redo that at the same time. Uh, we're not going to really be touching anything until the hotspots have been removed. And as a result of that, uh, we realized that the ball fields themselves, which have really lain dormant for a couple of years, um, also are going to need to be dressed and really redone. The surface is being redone. And we're thinking about that in terms of remediation. We're not going to be ripping up the ball fields. What we're basically going to be doing, and I, I pointed out in number two, uh, on my sheet, is to really, uh, put another layer on top of the ball fields of soil and sod and all that kind of good stuff and clay, so that, uh, it will act also as a, uh, as a remediating effect to the ball fields themselves. Um, finally, we're, we know we're going to be ripping up area very close to the playground, if not part of the playground itself. So the thought was there to, uh, something Anthony's been wanting to do for a long time is to come up with the town's first outdoor fitness facility. So the thought was to, if we're going to replace the playground, let's replace it with a nice playground. And the second playground that is on map number two, uh, we're going to remove that and make that into a, um, a, uh, um, outdoor fitness facility. So, and I'd also like you to note as well on the second map, that there is a, uh, I missed it the first time I looked. So I want you to look at the second map and there is a orange area down at the lower port, portion of the map along the lake. Uh, that's going to be remediated as well. That's going to be all removed as well. And that, that's an additional hotspot. So, uh, overall, we're asking for 945,000. I know we've asked to, asked for bond. I'm really asking for, uh, the authority to spend. Uh, how we do, how we, uh, fund it is, uh, really up to, up to your, uh, decision. Um, but I think as an overall 5,000-foot view, that's, uh, that's pretty much all I have. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, um, I'll open it up to the board.
Nancy, do you want to go?
You first.
All right, um, a few things. I guess, uh, hang on, I'm, I'm bringing the documents back up. It's a 20-year bond, correct? But again, the funding, we can work out with the Board of Finance after. This is really, the key here is the authorization to spend, right?
That's correct.
Um, the one thing I want to be, uh, very careful of here. We've had a couple of instances in the not-too, uh, distant past, whether it be the, uh, the berm around the fill pile, or whether it be, uh, Penfield, where we've gone forward with construction before we've actually got the approval, whether it be from FEMA or the other powers that be. I'm assuming you're not going to do one thing until such, uh, time as we have absolute approval. Is that correct?
That is absolutely correct. And the approvals we're seeking is from the Department of Health Services in Connecticut.
And what's the timing of that, Tom? Do, are you aware?
Oh, I'm, I'm, in very short order. I'm hoping this week or next.
So they already have all these plans, as you said, and you're just waiting on them to approve them?
That's correct.
Okay. And have you identified vendors to do this work as of this point in time?
Uh, we have, um, we've, it will, we've identified some of the vendors. Uh, in terms of the remediation effort itself, uh, we're hoping to use the same vendor that we're using at the number of other sites in town. And the thought is, um, as, as far as the remediation is concerned, the thought is that Gould Manor is going to be the, the, because it's a much bigger project for them, it's going to be kind of a fill-in, meaning that when the other pro, other sites that they're remediating, if there's a glitch or we need to wait for a few more days or a week or two for obtaining approval or whatever the plan is, uh, then they can always come to Gould Manor and, and, uh, continue work at Gould Manor kind of thing.
Yeah, kind of an economy scale. Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. And I, I don't want to, I don't want to have to pay for demobilizing and mobilizing. I want them to just keep working, whether it's here or somewhere else. Um, as far as the recreational stuff. As far as the recreational stuff, I mean, we're going to need to rebuild one of the dugouts. We're going to need some fencing, I'm sure, because it's going to get ripped up. So what Anthony is doing is basically, when he's providing me, he, obviously, we've gone to outside vendors to get some of these costs. The people that are going to be, that are going to be resurfacing the tennis courts, have resurfaced our other tennis courts and that sort of thing. So we're really, we're really focusing on the vendors that we've used in the past.
Tom, I al, I also noticed some masonry, some masonry work and some stonework, some stairs, that seem to be in rough shape there, by the ball fields, by one of the entrance ways to the park. Is that going to be addressed?
Yes, we're going to look at all that. Yep.
I don't, I don't want to, I mean, you just said something, we're going to look at it. I don't want to look at it, I want to fix it, right? I guess the way I'm approaching this project is, you know, the, these ball fields, this park has been kind of ground zero for, for the issues we've had. And it's been offline for a number of years. And I've been around long enough to know that sometimes we do things and we don't look holistically enough. And, you know, a year later, we get presented with something, or something comes to the surface, and, and we say, well, we need to do this now because we didn't do this as part of the project, right? And I would rather we not have that as part of this project. I would rather, given what it represents to the community, that we address it once, and we address it as completely as possible, and make this park, in all its forms, kind of a showcase. How do you feel about that?
If I could jump in, Tom, if you don't mind. So obviously, you know, this is an estimate for the items that are in the backup. And so if these items, you know, these smaller items that we see, as you're mentioning, come up, obviously, we, we would like to work on them. If there is a cost, too much of a cost that can't be incorporated in the original amount, we, we will come back for that, because obviously, I feel the same way. And I want to just also note that I have been in contact with the American League president to, to have conversations. I explained, we had this on the item, on the agenda, and that after it passed the Board of Finance, before it goes to the RTM, I want to bring them in to sit down and have a conversation. I spoke to the president Saturday about partnering with them, potentially to have them help us with the field part. The field does not have the high levels or hotspots on it. However, everything around, right? So, so it shouldn't be that bad. But I want to have a conversation with them in my administration to see if we could partner on this field, because I know they have, they're working and they're meeting a lot, and they have an interest in this. So when that happens, I will update, hopefully, I'll have the, an update for the Board of, sorry, the RTM at that point. But we do want to get moving on, and we want this to be open by the spring. And obviously, I feel the same way as you, Tom. I don't want to be penny wise, pound foolish, and I want to fix items as they come up. We will obviously ask the vendor to incorporate things we see that need to be fixed. And if there are items, if they does exceed the original cost estimate, we'll come back and ask for it. You're on mute, Tom. Sorry.
No, no, thank you. Probably a lot of people are happy I'm on mute. To that point, though, and that question, do we, do we know things that we've already noted at the park that we haven't included in this? That, that's really the, like, I want to go to, into this eyes wide open. Do we know things about the park that we've said we're not including right now? Or have we essentially included everything? And to your point, as things come up that we missed, well, you know, we'll address it, or, you know, to the extent we can.
Well, I mean, I'll let, I'll let Mr. Bremer, and I do want, before I go into it, I just want to thank Tom for his hard, Tom Bremer for his hard work on this. You know, he's had a tremendous lot of meetings on this item, and he keeps me updated regularly. And there's a lot of long meetings required on these things. And I just want to thank Mr. Bremer for his, his hard work on all of this. Yes, right? So, Tom, you know, originally, like, the remediation piece about 275,000, and, and to include these other things is to be more open-minded about the park while we're there. You know, the tennis court that needs to be done, the field, you know, replacing the old playground, because we're there, right? And having this new pool, outdoor workout area, which I think is really innovative, and other towns have it, and Anthony could speak more about it. But that's why we came with all these different, and not just remediating. We want to try to, while we're there, do something really great, and make it the best it can be for our community, if that helps answer.
No, it really does. Mr. Bremer, do you have anything specific that was put to the side, though?
Actually, we really don't. I've, I've had, I can't tell you all the meetings, and thank you, Brenda, for what you said. But no, I've got, Anthony has really, has given me the wish list, and we've incorporated all that. I really think that what's required is really, I guess the best way to put it in my mind is, I want to start the project, and I have, I am pretty confident that, I want to say 90% has been included. I, I, there's no, nothing in my mind that's been excluded. I mean, we're down to, I want to make sure the, you know, the underground sprinkler system is working, because I'm sure two things. Number one, it hasn't worked in two years, so I have a feeling that some things are going to not be working when they turn it on. And, and, and number two, we're going to put another layer on, so all those sprinkler heads and everything else need to be extended and all that kind of stuff. So I know there are other costs in that, that maybe some people haven't included, but I have in my mind, at least. And I think what I'm, what I'm really looking forward to is, once it gets started, and we have an overall sense of what we need to do, I'm, I'm guessing that a month into this, I'm going to have a much better sense if there's, if we need to include more things, or if the cost that we've projected will be sufficient. So, so to answer this, a long-winded answer, but I would say, no, there's nothing I know of that I'm, I'm, I've rejected. And number two, I wouldn't be surprised if a month into this, I'm back before you saying, you know, if we're going to do all this, we should, we should do X, Y, Z as well, and it's going to cost another X amount.
Have you put, have you, have you put conservative estimates for what these things are going to cost as you know them?
Yes.
Okay. So you're not being overly aggressive on the reduction of costs here?
Oh, no, not at all. Not at all.
Okay. My last question, then I'll turn it over, would be for Bond Counsel, as he hides there in the, in the set. 20 years for this. I know this is because it's remediation and all that, might be a bit of a unique circumstance, but in your experience, is 20 years the appropriate length of time for this?
Oh, I think 20 years is absolutely the appropriate length of time for this. I mean, presumably, once you, once you clean up the remediation, the park has a life much longer than 20 years.
Yeah, I hope so. How about the, is there any language in the bond resolution that's concerning, or is different than any other bond language we've used before, in case we go that route?
No.
Excuse me?
No.
Okay.
No.
Thank you so much. I appreciate the answers to my questions. And Mr. Bremer, thank you. I know from conversations you and I have had privately, I know how hard and long yourself, as well as DPW, has, has worked on this. So I appreciate it. And Brenda, thank you for your efforts on it, too.
Thanks, Tom. And let's not forget Anthony.
Yeah, there you go.
And thank you, Anthony and Tom. And Tom Flynn, I never thought I'd say this, or I won't say it often, but thank you for being my, my mouthpiece today. You've asked good questions, and have, have allowed me not to have to ask any. So thank you.
I appreciate it, Nancy.
All right. Well, that, that's awesome. Well, I'm excited about this. Obviously, as Tom Flynn mentioned, this was sort of a, sort of the beginning of a whole lot of stuff. And this park is important to our community, and I'm, I'm really, really looking forward to seeing it getting fixed, and looking amazing, and, and transformed even. So with this new outdoor workout area, which I think we should have like a Board of Selectment meeting there one day. We can like do a little workout before the meeting.
There is no way I'm going to be embarrassed by my two colleagues on the Board of Selectment at it.
Yeah. Brenda, you're way too into CrossFit.
At a fitness, yeah.
You should do the meeting from home.
There you go.
I'm excited about this outdoor workout area.
I think it's great, and it's nice for the community to have something that space where.
Yeah, something new, right?
Definitely.
All right. Well, if there's no further questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
Okay. Our next item is item number 12. Can everyone hear me, or am I echoing?
You're echoing a little bit now.
Hmm. Don't know why. Dave Kelly, do you know why? Is he on the line?
I've just muted the second floor conference room. I think you're soft.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Item number 12. To consider and act upon tax refunds as recommended by the tax collector in the amount of $34,302.41, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. So the next item, I do have some updates that I would like to provide to the board and to the public. Just quickly, Covid, the case rate obviously is extremely low, as it is statewide, and our vaccination rate is really good. And according to the state website, as of June 9, over 65% of eligible residents have at least one dose of their vaccination. And the clinic, our clinic will be wrapping up. They just, I just want, I know I've mentioned it many times, but I just want to say it again. They have done just such an amazing job. I am, our health department, we should throw a parade just for them, because they have worked nights, weekends. I mean, these people have just answered the call of duty above and beyond for our community. I am so incredibly grateful to them. In accordance to the latest CDC and state following guidance took effect, our town hall is open beginning June 7. People who are fully vaccinated can feel comfortable with no mask or social distancing, both indoors and outdoors. And people who are unvaccinated are required to wear a mask indoors, and should continue to wear a mask outdoors when they are in a crowd or at a large event. The Bigelow Senior Center is preparing to reopen, and will notify residents in the coming weeks with more details about that. And for guidance on the town library policy, please check the library website or webpage. Last week in the newsletter, I mentioned at the end that we were going to be going to every other week on the newsletter, because it's summer, and the budget is finished, and we have less items to report to the community. But of course, if there's something timely or critical that arises, we will send out notifications to the community. And today is Flag Day, and I hope our residents have had the opportunity to see the 70 flags that we have installed along the post road in celebration, in the upcoming, in celebration of our upcoming Independence Day. I'm really excited to, to display this in our town's patriotism throughout the town. And I want to also thank our DPW crews who went out Saturday morning to put the flags up. I think they look amazing. And I want to also announce that June's Tree of Hope will, will be lit on Sherman Green for the Center of Family Justice. And this, this one, it will be for the LGBTQ community who experience violence at higher rates than the general population, and are less likely to report or seek resources. So I hope, you know, you take a look at, our community takes a look at the tree that's going to be lit in, in their, in, in recognition of them. I want to mention also, on June 21, we will be raising the pride flag in, in front of the town, Old Town Hall, and at 11:30, if anybody would like to join us. And.
What time is that?
11:30 on June 21.
Okay, thanks.
And so I want to also announce, so there's been a lot of talk about our federal money. We're getting the American stimulus money. And I wrote some notes, and I just want to share that with both of you, and also with our community who may be listening. So the town of Fairfield is going to be receiving 24.8 million as part of the American Rescue Act. And I've been working with our department heads and my administration to compile a list of priorities for our town. The funding can apply to costs incurred starting March 3, 2021, and eligible costs must be incurred by December 31, 2024, and spent by December 31, 2026. Generally speaking, eligible costs are limited. However, if the town can show revenue loss tied back to the pandemic, the universe of expenses that are eligible is much broader. There is, there's a calculation to determine our revenue loss, and based on the formula provided by Treasury, Fairfield's revenue loss in 2020 is about 10.4 million, according to the formula. We have identified four areas of focus: public safety, recreation, environment, and other town investments, which includes the Senior Center, funding for a racial equity and justice task force, mental health programming, via nonprofits, and other items. I'll be coy, I'll be working to call a joint meeting of the Board of Select and Board of Finance and RTM to present a list of items that we have worked really hard on. A lot of these have already been approved for bonding, and some have not, but are not unknown to our boards, elected officials, so that we can also update, show our priority list, and other items that are just not on the priority, broken out into a first year and second year tranches. And then we'll be asking the public to provide input during that meeting. Then we will call another meeting for a vote to approve the list. So I just wanted to update on that. We're going to be working to schedule that joint meeting. This week, we'll be looking to schedule it. Hopefully, I'd like to get it done before the end of June, because we'd love to start, you know, the timeline here of when we can, when we have to spend the money is, is, is tight. I wanted to also update the board and our community, you know, obviously, this past year, we, well, since I took over, and when we did the VRE, we did a lot of reorganization, but talking about this throughout my administration. So I wanted to, updates on our, our commitment to doing this. And so we are, we have decided to move the position of the DPW Superintendent to Superintendent of Parks, under the Park and Recreation Department. This will eliminate the position of DPW, but has no budgetary impact. So Doug Novak, who is our current Superintendent, will now directly report to the Park and Recreation Director, Anthony Calabrese. He has expanded responsibilities, and will have Kevin Fox and the seven full-time staff, as well as seasonals, move under his supervision. We believe this change provides more accountability and a better chain of command. Anthony Calabrese currently oversees the parks, and yet the people managing them don't report to him. And it really didn't make sense to us. And honestly, most towns have organized it this way. So I'm not sure why we did it differently. The DPW's four supervisors, Highway, Fleet, Building, and Tree, will now directly report to our DBW Director and our soon, hopefully, hired Assistant DPW Director. As you know, and then during the winter storms, it's going to be pretty much all hands on deck. So those people won't just be working in parks, they'll also be jumping in and working like they always do on our storms, because we always need everybody. Like I said before, this is a change in who people will report to, but there is no budgetary impact. And like we did with separating out the Marina budget last year, for the next budget cycle, we will take out Parks and Rec from DPW, move it under this section, under the Park and Recreation Budget. Mr. Calabrese is on the line, if you do have any questions on this item. I'm happy to, I have one more thing after this, but I'm happy to open it up if anybody would like to ask any questions on this item, or this update.
Appreciate the update. It's informative and helpful. Thank you.
Yeah. You know, in the past few months, I had a few people reach out to me involved with the Little Leagues, related to field maintenance, and how things are put together and managed. And certainly, one of the things that became apparent was, it, it was kind of a, as you pointed out, Brenda, a little bit of a. pointed out, Brenda, a little bit of a, it, it was a convoluted situation where authority and responsibility for the fields was, was shared across many departments, causing confusion for both the public, and probably causing some inefficiencies within the town. So the ability to have Park and Rec oversee the maintenance and the prioritization of, of the maintenance of our playing fields and, and that, I think is a very good outcome. So I'm supportive of that. I think we need to make sure that we continue on this path and continue the investment and a long-term plan for that, and making sure that, Anthony, your planning documents that I know got approved through the budgetary process, takes this into consideration so that we have both a short-term maintenance plan, a medium term, and then a long-term plan is very good. And, and one of the other things I would hope that we can reach out, and it's a shame, I think Mr. Papa George dropped off, but one of the other confusing aspects was, whether it was the Board of Education Administration, or Town Park and Rec, or DPW, that was responsible for which fields. And I think better coordination with the Board of Education and truly understanding who is responsible for which of these parks and which of these fields, and how do we go about maintaining those, would also be very beneficial. So I applaud the efforts to, to kind of clean up this reporting on these items, this reporting structure.
Thank you, Tom. Nancy, do you have any thing you want to ask?
As I said, I think, thank you for the update, and, and I think this makes sense, and, you know, thank you.
Thanks. So the last thing I want to bring up is that I got a number of emails from, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to add, I'm hardened by your list of priorities, too, in terms of the federal money, so I just wanted to say, you know, thank you for that, and at the appropriate time, when, when there's opportunities for public input, I think that will be great to hear sort of where the public lies on this, but, you know, personally, I, I'm appreciative of your list of priorities, so thank you.
No, and listen, you know, these are, a lot of these items are things that we're all pretty aware of, and there's some new stuff. But, you know, I, I put, we put priorities together, we, we've been pulling information so that when we do present to our boards, we have good information, so when the questions are asked, we can answer them. But we want to hear the input, you know, it's, I have priorities, you know, certain things like Rooster River, which is, you know, a concern and an issue, things like these types of things. But obviously, we want feedback from the elected officials and the public, so this is not a set in stone, this is just really good, solid information, and hopefully, it'll be helpful for everyone in making decisions as we go forward.
Does the, go ahead. Board of Ed, does that factor in? Can you explain how that?
So they got different, they, they have their own money coming directly to them, and so they're, it's a separate than, than ours. The town money is coming to us, and their money is separate. So I'm not sure what their criteria is and how it aligns with them. I know what ours, I know Jared's been doing a lot of research, talking to CCM, getting a lot of emails and, and updates from the federal government about criteria and all these other items, so. Does that answer your question?
Thank you.
Okay. The last item I want to bring up is, I got a lot of emails from parents, or I was copied, and I think you both might have, might have as well, regarding masks. And I know the superintendent sent out an email a little over a week ago, talking to, you know, the community or to parents about federal funds and having to, to send in a plan, sort of a mitigation plan, to be able to receive federal dollars. And I think a lot of parents took it to be that it wasn't going to change, and I, I think the superintendent did respond to a lot of parents, but I just want to say, for the record, that I'm going to be reaching out to the governor as well and asking if they're, you know, what their stand is going to be going forward, and how they're working on this. But again, the superintendent said, and sort of the other superintendents in our state, they had to submit a plan, and that that plan could very well, most likely, be modified over the summer, because things will change. They're not necessarily going to be the same, and I think a lot of parents thought that that meant that this was set in stone, and that our students would have to be masked when they go back to school next year, and that's just, that's not for certain at all. So I just wanted to say that for the record, and so I hope that, you know, I know, I'm sure a lot of parents called the superintendent or called the Board of Ed members to talk about this, but I think there was some misunderstanding with the community on this item. And I know that it's very hard, it was hot, there was a heat wave last week, and I got emails from parents, I think some of, I think both of you may have been on some of those, you know, and, and obviously, it's, 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 you know, there's a certain set of standards, where adults who are vaccinated don't have to wear a mask, and the younger children cannot get vaccinated, but the rates are so low for, for our younger children. So I hope we can have more expanded dialogue with our State Department of Public Health and the Governor's Office, and I hope the CDC modified some of their guidelines, because, you know, honestly, I, I don't want to see our children masked in the fall, if they don't have to be, because I think it's been really difficult for them. So I do want to, I just wanted to mention that, and I'll open it up if anybody wants to have a dialogue or to have a discussion about the item.
I think, you know, I, I agree with what you're saying in terms of, if our children don't have to, we've all seen and felt and experienced a freedom that has come with being able to take it off, and the rates are so low, so, you know, hopefully, it does change, and you get, you get somewhere with the state, so.
I, I am freezing the restrictions and moving along from this. It's, it's time we move forward, given the facts at hand. And I agree, I, I still have a child in the, in the public schools, and, and still having to wear masks has been difficult, and certainly in the warmer weather, that does add its additional challenges. So I, I think it's time we move this along.
Well, thank you. Listen, I think this school district, as all our school districts are in a, you know, and they're in a tough spot. We have children who attend school who do have, you know, medical issues or underlying health issues, so this is, this is complicated. It's not just, you know, take masks off for everybody, so hopefully, we'll get some resolutions over the summer, and we'll have some more information. But I did want to mention it, because I know a lot of people are, are very concerned about it. All right, well, if, if there's nothing else that either one of you want to bring up, if there is, sure.
I, yeah, sorry, Brenda, there's one question, and it just might be my confusion, so forgive me. Were we supposed to have a, a presentation or an update, Nancy, from the Equity Task, the Equity Task Force? I just, yeah, go ahead.
We, I'm in New York, I'm away for work.
Oh, great.
And so I think Jennifer had made the decision to push it a week based on, you know, out of respect for my own schedule, which I appreciate, so.
No, that's totally fine, I just wasn't aware. I hope everything's going well at work and your event's going well, too.
Yeah, thank you.
All good.
All right. Well, if nobody has anything else further, you get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Have a good week, everybody.
Yeah, have a good night.